Yeah.
Thank you for volunteering. Uh, our community is, I believe, as noted, what our volunteer community, uh, are great volunteers and a lot of great volunteers around. So, thank you for standing forward and, uh, volunteering to the downtown management organization, organization of the downtown that.
Move it, segment.
Yes.
Yes.
Next on our agenda is item five, remediation. The cabinet communication from the advisory committee on the initial communication strategy representations, uh, that was done by a group of about one or volunteers. I think we're in the presentation, right? That's Billy McDermott, Rob Stane, and Jerry. Uh, so, like the vice president, Alton Cipri.
Thank you. Thank you. Recommendation on continuing upgrade and updating the borough website. Billy is already started doing that and definitely very helpful for you. Continue to make website accessible with transportation and accessibility accommodations. Uh, consulting social media channels who wants to authority and then work well with the borough, um, channel, but there are some other channels that are social media. Channels that are more diversified like the mom's love than you were something to need for that. Uh, well, technical services, that would be here. Post a new, uh, physical community board, bringing for suppliers, individuals, and direct mail, including in Spanish. This is something that we got worried about. Enhance collaboration with school districts and libraries. Uh, and again, he was giving that whole community building events, young, young families, new Spanish teachers and other cultural groups. Potential improvements for Spanish teachers include providing transportation options. Um, hold input to that meeting in Spanish, go over Spanish interpretation meetings, target language staff. Uh, the borough paper page, have YouTube in France, uh, chat in French on WhatsApp and your messenger. And continue to plan both English sports and English language learning program. And where word now, Spanish teachers is definitely there. So, I think there's still there's a lot of ideas, a lot of the new ones, we want to do, although we can teach you that we today. This community, the whole community involved, we started going on, uh, within the borough, uh, within the borough and one of the other. So, thank you very much. Um, only two questions, yeah. Only thank, um, uh, Jamaica and Tamar and all the members of the community library unit, for their contribution. And, uh, I've stayed with you there and I know, I know now to continue to support the community in whatever direction they want to go forward. Communications and related activities. So, so again, thanks and, uh, yeah, I look forward to seeing them. Where I saw them on the other weekends, coming in the coming news. Uh, thanks and, um. These belong to the senior center and they are on our conscience, as we have worked on, Aman's post. It's just too much, but you know.
Okay, great work. I know Jessica Dunn is here, she was on today, so thank you for your service there. And former contributed to it. I know P D has been submitted with Doc, it's contributed with the. It really helped a whole bunch of categories, schools involved, so, uh, just thank you there. And, uh, hopefully see where it goes. We're excited for it. Okay, next up is item six, on the agenda, introduction of ordinances. Uh, and then the motion second, according to point twenty-four, that point four, the ordinance to the Minnesota back to the chapter two, third, seventh, sidewalk cafes. Move it, segment.
Second, man.
Um, so the public, I see he was normally not present. I will leave a little specifics one-on-one. Introduce the orders, we don't talk about them right now because they're just voting in this time, if they produce. There's a ten-day period, a minimum of a ten-day period until they have to be publicly heard adopted, because now period. Uh, ordinance is provided accountable, it's been provided accountable, but it's required publicly reviewed. Up to the next meeting, there's a policy carrying adoption, and you can fully dedicate another family ordinance and question any commentary I can say. I think it's definitely the best. Also with that, we'll discuss it, uh, with the second, motion in the second, which now will take a hold.
Sound time, yes. Mr. Lamb, yes. Three O, Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Freyman?
Yes.
Mr. Freyman?
Yes.
Next meeting, order this ordinance will be brought for the mayor council, will be Shepard Burn at already council meeting, seven p.m., where we publicly heard. On seven. We're gonna choose that. Uh, next up is item seven, on the agenda, which are resolutions, uh, municipal quarters. That is what the resolution, providing an opportunity for the resolutions for us to discuss and record your.
Resolution three point two is to pay the bills.
Moving.
Three O.
Second, segment.
Mr. Albertson? Yes. Mrs. Lance? Yeah. Three O? Yeah. Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Freyman?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Resolution two twenty-three is to grant the waiver on request of affirmative for the two twenty-ten on August sixteen, twenty twenty-four, voted by Doc. Moving, Alton, second. Mr. Albertson? Yes. Mrs. Lamb?
Yes.
Mr. Freyman? Yeah. Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Freyman?
Yes.
Mr. Freyman?
Yes.
I will note this, there are members of the Denon Housing Community Committee here this evening, right in the back, in the hallway. That you're serving the community and Doc, as it's abbreviated, is a subcommittee of the Denon Recreation Parks Commission. And they are individuals who volunteer their time to set up events throughout the borough. Uh, they have a restaurant, we walk up to there once a month. Um, they also do the local walking events, uh, and, uh, towards the, like, where the handsome gardens still here, uh, still here. Um, and basically what they do is they provide things to new per individuals eighteen and up. Because our recreation program really focused heavily on the youth and you have senior program, we're going to have the senior club, and so this helps fill the gap in the, so thank you for your service. If anyone wants to get involved, there was a call. Okay, next one.
Resolution two twenty-four, they authorize the school park, giving us, they're all, how to be like, this from August fifth, twenty twenty-four through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four.
Moving. Second, segment.
Mrs. Albertson? Yes. Mrs. Lance?
Yeah.
Mr. Freyman? Yeah. Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Freyman?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yeah.
Resolution two twenty-five is to amend resolution two thirty, twenty twenty-four, and one seventy-five, the summer of our twentieth century, so we know our increases and older communities will have a large.
Move it, segment.
Yes. Mrs. Albertson? Yes. Mrs. Lance?
Yeah.
Mr. Freyman? Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Freyman?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Resolution number two twenty-six is to hire two property owners. Mr. Freyman?
Second, man.
Mrs. Albertson? Yes. Mrs. Lance?
Yeah.
Mr. Freyman?
Yeah.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Freyman?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Resolution two twenty-seven is to point across the wire for the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five believer.
Move it, segment.
Mrs. Albertson? Yes. Mrs. Lance?
Yeah.
Mr. Freyman? Yeah. Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Freyman?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
For article sixty-one, this is the second amendment to the real agreement, five, between the borough and Denon, and eight, seventeen, March, Tuesday, and I will say, four thirty-five, four forty-one.
Move it, segment. This is to address a clerical parent prior read on which parcel of the law come out of prior parcel, which the children had purchased, was not added to the job, this is.
It will, so, yeah. Slime?
Yeah.
Mr. Freyman? Yeah. Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Freyman?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Resolution two twenty-nine is to determine if proposed head plan, the certificate would be for process plan, and maybe not, and then for whoever the five, four forty-one, more having results in progress.
Move it, segment.
Second, Alton.
This is the same project as previous revolution. They were previously brought for the mayor council, presented their concept plan, and this is procedural basically to say that still land or, uh, you bring a plot, develop, bring it, and then.
Very okay, the role, Mr. Albertson? Yes. Mr. Frank?
Yes.
Mr. Freyman? Yeah. Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Freyman?
Yes.
I'm Mr. President, Mark.
Yes.
Resolution, and version thirty, authorizing the, 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 the application for soil, and maybe the, maybe she'll offer various forms, additional of the letter of credit, which is maybe the, the, the amount of thirty-six thousand dollars. Relating to the site remediation at five hundred and ninety.
Move it, segment. Uh, Mr. Robertson, we just spoke during, getting dressed, this department.
Just briefly, this is a resolution authorizing the borough administrator to sign certain application forms that are required by J P P. Uh, the property involves a property five hundred, uh, Matthew Terrace, uh, the borough purchase property, quite a number of years ago, there's been ongoing remediation of that property that's being paid for as an escrow counter to set up by seller. You know, nearing completion of the remediation and the, uh, licensed site remediation professional who's involved in the remediation. Uh, is required by these two, uh, application forms with any of the pages in order to get final sign off approval. So this, uh, we're, we're now at property, we have to sign off. Uh, so that we will be signing them, they'll be submitted to J P P by, I'll do license site remediation.
Mrs. Allison? Yeah. Mrs. Lance?
Yeah.
Mr. Freyman? Yeah. Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Freyman?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Resolution two thirty-one, authorizing the release of order five for the property located at one forty-eight, one fifty, last week, three, block fifty-two, block home.
Move it, segment.
Okay, yeah.
I'm going to request that Mr. Robertson also address this.
Uh, this is a, just a resolution authorizing the release of the balance, uh, that's left in a performance guarantee. There's approximately thirteen thousand dollars that remains in the performance guarantee. Uh, this was related to a development, uh, that goes back to two thousand and fifteen. Uh, a certificate occupancy has been issued. Uh, the applicant, a developer has requested the release of the performance guarantee, and this is authorizing that release. Uh, such, subject to, there is a, a written acknowledgement, consent authorization to return, uh, to the person who has requested it. Uh, subject to receipt of that assigned document, the fund will be released from yesterday.
Okay.
Thank you, Mrs. Albertson? Yes. Mrs. Lance? Mr. Freyman? Yeah. Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Freyman?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Resolution two thirty-two is to hire and announce as nobody in charge for the fall season for the Denon Recreation Park. Over here, ten hours. Albertson? Yes. Mrs. Lance?
Yeah.
Yeah. Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Freyman?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Resolution two thirty-three is to hire all and spoken staff for the recreation park.
Move it, segment.
Yeah, Mr. President? Mrs. Albertson? Yeah. Mrs. Lance?
Yeah.
Mr. Freyman? Yeah. Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Freyman?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Resolution two thirty-one, is dividing of the post-site plans, consistent with the contact plan, the rate level plan, for four hundred, four hundred and twenty, for that really good level.
Move it, segment. Similar to the previous revolution, this is the same exact thing, uh, build this project, present, thank being here with me, and that is the federal, like, saving words to the record.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and Mr. Council. Uh, this is our first experience, I wanted to advise the council, the site plan that we provided to you is consistent with the redevelopment, uh, ordinance that was adopted, pointing my mind to designated redevelopment for this project. This is the project right down the street, wherever we have time for America, and for day squad currently, uh, where current tenants, or former tenants, they decide, uh. The application consists of fifty departments, next to studios, one, two, or three bedroom, four units, three bounds, where we have commercial space, and even parking space. And, uh, plan that we provided to you is, uh, the, for my project as a, as a.
Albertson? Yes. President Lance?
Yeah.
Mr. Freyman? Yeah. Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Freyman?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Resolution two thirty-five is authorizing the agreement of violation of visiting property in place at the home, and six fifty-six pound approach. For the cost extended in accordance with chapter two seventy-eight, property maintenance, but the wood is the brownness.
Move it. Second, segment. Okay.
I did, just, uh, uh. Uh, ju- just, uh. I want to amend, I just noticed since reading says residential property and that's, I think, commercial, public, residential property.
Yeah, this sounds for public knowledge, this is the whole project, there's a proper amount of growth. And, uh. Center. Um, basically. That property. So. If we have to do ourselves and. Well, I'm saying rest.
So, I, I would note that the reference to residential should be amended to remove, uh, the board residential. Uh, but the pursuit to the property maintenance, uh. Orders of the borough's code. Uh, this property owner has been notified. Uh, that there is a violation, uh, nothing has been done about it, they can give it an opportunity to comply. As at this point. Taking action to the quest of the borough authorization. To actually, uh. In the cleanup to evade the condition that exists there. Cost of that may not necessarily against property. And that mean would be.
I have one question about the property, um, was it us that removed the artwork or did the property all? Also thank you for. People, yes, you won.
All right, I'll take a roll. Mrs. Albertson, yes. Mrs. Lance?
Yes.
Mr. Rio?
Yeah.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Freeman?
Yes.
Mr. Reddick? Yes. Resolution two thirty six is certified with our review, twenty twenty three, on.
Move it, segment.
Mrs. Albertson, yes. Mrs. Lance?
Yes.
Mr. Rio? Yes. Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Mr. Reddick? Yes. Resolution two thirty seven is accepting the corrective action plan for the calendar year twenty twenty three. Mr. Rio? Second, obviously. Mrs. Albertson, yes. Mrs. Lance?
Yeah.
Mr. Rio? Yeah. Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Freeman?
Yes.
Mr. Reddick? Yes. Resolution two thirty eight is authorizing the borough beyond, except the sub grand award for several of the clear development for a very fifty nine, the performance grant, and then we're into the amount of V D P.
Move it, segment.
Okay, Rio?
Mr. Homer? If you want to talk about this. If he gets mad.
Yes, sure. Uh, we've got all the requirements every year, uh, when you, uh. Apply for that, you first of all, have to, um. Make sure that you, uh, meet the requirements within time, and then you have a. A contract in which only, uh. I have to sign with the state saying that I will accomplish A B to. A to Z. In terms of various work categories. So we were able to meet that. And we are, uh, we are ready to, uh, sit down, dogs. For. For the year, uh, beginning, uh, July first. Through, uh. June thirty of twenty twenty five.
Good work to you.
It's all right. So hopefully we'll be, that money will start to roll in around the.
Collectively, how much have you been able to get grants to us, uh?
This will be our fourth grant, so basically we bought in forty thousand dollars to the borough.
Uh, thank you. And I will say that. Our office emergency management went, uh, basically not operational. We're now being the model for Middlesex County, I'm going to be borrow here for here. They see several hundred. See, thank you to your service to. So around twelve damage. Okay.
Now, I'll take a roll, Miss Albertson, yes. Mr. Lance?
Yes.
Mr. Rio?
Yeah.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Freeman?
Yes.
Mr. Reddick? Yes. Resolution two thirty nine is extending the original residential community state network. And redevelopment for the probably following, like block six, five, block. One and block fifty, block two, this is for five oh one of them.
Move it, segment.
Okay, yeah.
Similar to last time dealing with the state and, uh, the D V P, uh. Building my roadblock, so it's still a process they. Fortunately, those. Your what, what it is, um, it's prolonged process, we've been down on, uh. Previous redevelopment. So. Continue the conversation with the various stakeholders that request. When said, so hopefully by even to this one, we have a final plot. So, uh, the way on this. Another.
Mrs. Albertson, yes. Mrs. Lance?
Yeah.
Mr. Rio?
Yeah.
Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Mr. Reddick? Yes. Resolution number two forty, authorize the chapter one to the town, for the neighborhood coordination enforcement and fifteen five.
Move it, segment.
Yes. Mrs. Albertson, yes. Mrs. Lance? Mr. Rio?
Yeah.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Mr. Reddick? Yes.
I don't think I, I meant to. Some of your teams. Started to do now, if you want to get some friends?
Yeah.
Yeah. How are we doing? Maybe we can do. Education hall. I have to look at the. Uh, thank you, maybe nice house, maybe let's get it. Yeah. 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 See the. Uh, yeah. Dr. Wolf. Okay, yeah. We all. Great.
Resolution number forty one, providing for emergency coordination around fifty thousand dollars. To provide for the room and remediation.
Move it, segment.
Yeah.
I love you.
Yeah, uh, earlier this year, we, uh. Down the, uh, by the church office in the. Lot, that we, uh, that is a hole in there. Do remediation, those will time. They place. They, uh, say. Air blocks, fine, they're there, so. Both of that. Uh, we couldn't tell where, where the, where the water issue is from. They basically had to clean out the whole process. Take down the block, have material for the wall and. On the report, it's directed.
That's what you got.
Uh, it was. Part of this emergency was that, and then the other part is, there was a little bit of other underfunding, buildings and grounds. So. So, uh, just throw some.
Albertson, yes. Mrs. Lance?
Yes.
Mr. Rio?
Yeah.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Mr. Reddick? Yes. Resolution two forty two is to approve a law party on landing players.
Move it, segment.
Second, obviously. Mrs. Albertson, yes.
Okay, that's very important.
Um. Mr. Rio? Yes. Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
And Mr. Reddick? Yes. Next, there's a good time to turn, we just need motion aside here, we could go. All everything. And you ready to call anything, so that we will. What, Rio? Second, obviously. Well, yeah. Mrs. Lance?
Yes.
Mr. Rio?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Freeman?
Yes.
Mr. Reddick? Yes.
Okay, let's go to the council report, so, so the council president, Albertson, any reports here?
Uh, in twenty nine, the call, twelve was marked, three thousand. Free service call, five with ten, P M S, and we're about near today, they had a hundred forty nine. Firehouse rebuild, this progress progressing. From the tower was completed last week. Final completion expected to be again, four weeks. Exterior work begun, with additional meetings with management. Into a new project. July was another busy month for them. Uh, the department had several drills in their heads, but the meeting, often meeting on July seventh, but like hey, they had work drill, and got apparatus. During twenty seventeen, twenty first, they had a monthly rain drill. Where they reviewed hybrid system, upset, water, bio. July twenty fifth. Conducted a green plan and walk drill of the departments at five forty six pound road. And July twenty ninth, held a work drill, continuing with an improvement into the firehouse. Apparatus update. The chief captain performed free delivery inspection of new engine three, engine was approved, and is in presence of the saddle plane. Once in New Jersey, after the fire protection will begin now, the ball will be equipped. The engine should be in service by the end of the. At one schedule for free delivery inspection next. The Volvo dwell is expected to arrive in New Jersey in. The Denial Better Fire Company and all fire department, if you remember, uh, remember, anyone who's been joining, visit. W W W dot Denial F D dot com or email them at join F D at Denial F D dot com. Denial, they have how many mineral organization and are currently working? A meeting discussed a couple of best downtown agreements and activities for the. The Denial American Nation, uh, Carl show Wednesday night for the minute from five to eight food available for purchase. Friday night dinner, five P M until noon, um, bar bingo on August thirteenth and twenty seventh, six to eight P M food available for purchase. All persons help our. And the Denial Union, who likes, I'll give a shout out to Lauren Stack, who were for submitting our form, the county knew one of the first municipal to be approved until twenty five. And this year we're receiving additional two thousand dollars, bringing our grand total to seven thousand nine hundred.
Report. Dr. Maria, welcome back. You have been reported.
Yes. There is, um, I've reached the halfway mark. But there's still time to register them. The building department will leave, although we're not. I'm going to say on the seventh stage, already will be back, with a special behavior from a track to work stop. Inspired by, by Lawrence and that, where. Where the wild thing on film or maybe six, three, twelve, and when they are. For the competing first team to shop for adults. And on, on the meeting, program, you will, this is a live bird, so be sure to call and let to stop, or stop, I have library work. Pick up a calendar. School summer, you both are still male or survivor. Oh, dear, questions please, let's know our website, based on state for something to tell the mother. Board of N, see, we office twenty seven, seventy two. School starts with their follow now soon. Now we're back to work. There are two more weeks of summer to come. The campus has a holiday weekend, summer is coming, so luckily rather than summer to pay for the time today. Campus is lived for more, tomorrow campus is going to come up that pay tree again. For a double day. Subway series game, and the following would be a trip to branch first. This year we hit a record, but ten and sixteen, children involved. This year, the campus is for nine weeks, with a happy year, um, just ending that five years. Registration is open for all talk, so the talk is moving right here. Begins in September, who begins during three K through eight three. The deadline to register is this Friday, while. You know, on the south wing, it's open, while we approach a test paper or even. The annual. The annual senior victory this Friday, September twenty eighth. That. Eleven thirty, at the American Asian victory crowd, anyone interested in attending can call rec program four eight, fellas. Four eight with Kelly Seater at the rec office, working out for. These figures know, though, uh. The rec department is always a western, like, we are absolutely. That's all.
Seth, okay, thank you. Dr. Oliver, back in one, welcome back. Yeah, and they report.
Yep. Uh, your support is, uh, I think, there's more of a reason to give that, council. We, we, we want to. Was to tell them. But, no, this department was. No, pretty far, many of them captured, it was. Graduated, and now. That, sort of time, time target. To the mission to defend. And to all the people involved in. Working to start. And no, this department is working hard and well. Please, please, visit our physical page, one one three, C R T.
Thank you, Dr. Oliver, congratulations to the, uh, the. That'll be. Dr. Lawrence, anything to put?
In a double. He can. Honoring forces, place, gather network. Since that house floor will burn all in. Our impact system, certain, for their plans, if we were all in. Service, including running updates, including after a full backup. Servers have been operational for over three days, about eight, and four security updates. Sentinel one, and we, section, and response, software, software was installed on all of our walls, replacing the firing. By perfect, the perfect system. Um, ongoing network audits are being conducted, recommendation followed. Various password, right on for all sites, such as by I C information. Popers, handling server alert, making feeling, V D E, I V changes for people. Efforts were focused on solving the design servers, space constraint, and plans of the server in the near future. There's also this phone system, the rock and fire at all. Um, the phone lines from rural, and in place owners. Technologies, as well as the build of. The configuration. And the pay on the next, the average, all power lines on the bridge, I think here, okay? And are ready to operate, the L A D lights will be sold soon, and they expect A C and G to find a better connection. And lights should be up and running the next few days to highlight new terminals that are expected to be, expected to be done.
News. Not only, I don't remember. I remember being a child, and it's like more work, so. Spies, we, we need, so, yeah, well, it's, it was. They look really nice. Okay, it's good for safety, so good work. Anything else? Oh, okay. Count member, say that, uh, yes, uh, the mayor's not going to be desperate in saving the task force, has created slowdown in our town details, and we will actually be walking door to door. To deliver them to targeted areas, and hopefully refer some of those families to walk with us and deliver them to other areas. Uh, you'll be able to get them other methods, uh, more information is coming out. And I would also just like to commend, uh, Alex Miller and Kelly Seater for such a wonderful, uh, rec camp program, um, especially with the addition of aftercare, it's just been wonderful. Uh, and my kids are loving it, so, thank you and the team.
I hope you didn't get too much.
In plant retreats. I expected to rip his shirt off for a thing. Okay. Anything else? That is all, again, for your, constantly, Scott.
Uh, for D P W and Parson, uh, D P W crews routinely clean the downtown area of all the borough parks. Continue to do weekly lawn and landscape maintenance in borough parks and properties. Streets sweeping schedule continues, and we had been passed that all residents, you know, park on the street, depending where streets will be scheduled. Also sweep up debt basins, especially with the rain coming, all the helps needed. Uh, they've continued to remove debris from the trash truck. Completed asphalt repairs on the bend of Mountain U Terrace prior to the Mill and Pay project, that'll give more stability to the base in that area. Uh, walked the streams and cleared the breeze at the headwalls. Ran multiple loads, uh, roll off loads to the dump. Assisted P S E and G with removal of two dead trees in the power lines. And continue to maintain the equipment with truck two and truck twenty five and the mowers. Uh, roll off season. Reminder begins September seventh, the annual household roll off drop off starts. Uh, for more information, you can go to the bar website on the public works page. Uh, there is assistance for senior citizens and disabled community members to schedule assistance. Denial seniors and disabled community members who do not have means to bring material to the disposal site, I can take part in the D P W office. At seven, three, two, nine, six, eight, five, four, five, five. Please leave a message, uh, one week prior to the drop off date and pickup will be on the Friday before your street is scheduled for disposal. Uh, for Parsa. Parsa has re-inspected the newly installed sewer main on Klein Place, and they were happy with the section of the sewer main, uh, that were replaced and reset. Parsa was also on site. Uh, we're on site for the sewer main repairs on Grove Street and the bypass. That was in the section of Columbia parking lot, both sections are fully operational now. That's all I have.
Thank you. Thank you for bringing up about the test basis, we need to. It's, uh, to ask that question, you're gonna get it, so, you're ahead of the game. Uh, but just as a P S A, D P W does go around and sweep them out, go around the tree sweeper. Uh, but clearly, not on duty. Blowing leaves around or debris sometimes, they're not able to get right that picture from your house. As Captain Mary Scott said, it's, uh, takes a village, so you could just kind of go out, because the D P W is not there right then and there. Uh, you know, they were there earlier this week, you're ready for this.
Sometimes you buy this, sometimes you're not very far, but.
Exactly. So, thanks for your understanding. Okay, um. For Bradley and Sydney. For that, uh, the George W model firehouse, that's some, uh, follow updates too. Uh, work on the Jordan W model firehouse, who George just recently turned. Um, is nearing completion and the fire department begun moving their gear back inside the building. Uh, remaining work is anticipated to be completed in the coming week, the brand reopening event tend to be being planned for this fall. Uh, with more detail to follow, there was a good recommendation, uh, by Captain Mur, and Mark, I read at dinner with. It's effective regulatory, um, for our revenge engine, so, maybe that's something to think about. Um, as the Denial Fire Department prepares for full reopening, they're also preparing to welcome the brand new truck. Uh, firing three, being received specs as firing two, uh, which was the sole defender of the two thousand two fire. Uh, Borough Denial Altis Settlement, famous intervention provider. Uh, the Borough Denial Altis U S A have reached a settlement regarding following their services. That was approved by the New Jersey Board of Public Utilities. Department settlement, we Denial Public Library have been wanting to see free one G services. Three times compared to the previous service that it provided. Uh, these one G services are built for the public, but inside of the library and just outside of the library via wire. That's exciting and we're working very quickly with Comcast, which will be the one in the next two years providing the services. Obviously, where the independent provider is looking to raise capital for the five project to be able to prove a lack here. And I won't name names, whatever. If you'd like another provider that's interested. So, think about it, I can probably do it two minutes, so in the two years, in five years, we'll have more. Penitators in a little mirror to pot. Who said that can be done? So it's. Um, competition. Free market. Uh, National Nightingale, as we all know, to our National Nightingale, I have canceled due to the weather. Now I'm gonna say this, although it's been canceled this year, a National Nightingale really presents an opportunity to get us community. To get to know our local emergency services more specifically, at least in part of this event. Get to know them and show their hearts of course. So I just ask, even though it's canceled this year, throughout the year, please get to know our local. Officers and armed services, because they really do put their life on the line, I think, for community. It's our B D, our O M, fire department, rescue squad. Um, I hope, uh, you have lieutenants here this evening on September third, you'll be sworn in at the Denial new captain in how many years, you know? What is it? Twenty seven years? So we'll be promoted, um, but, uh. Maybe we get a, a coffee, a coffee with a cop, right, that's, that's the name, coffee with a cop. Lieutenants, maybe we can talk to the, to the, your force and see if we can get a coffee with a copy now. Yeah, you're paying for it, so. Uh, problem with a cop, so we can, you know, continue to communicate. But thank you for your service and your team. Um. Denial County's Community Committee, good shot, night, movies in the park. On Friday, August sixteenth, out the Denial Public Radio Department and the library will be teaming up the votes to combine food truck and movies in the park, five, seven thirty P M in Washington, New York Park. Be sure to bring a blanket or chair and books, bring and pick up some food, a variety of prepared food and trucks. And we pass the revolution plan, so hopefully they're gonna be picked for vendors. And lots of sustainable jerseys here, I'll just make note, Washington Park was one of the many locations in Denial that was the benefactor of the. Uh, sustainable jersey trees for schools, right? So there's, like, a dozen trees that went down, you know, five shakes, so. Gee, so, um, thank you.
Send pictures.
Okay, which was on, on August safety. And the year of the new spirit, James, and the year of Asian, yeah, which was provided by a great, just for people on that. Thank you, thank you very much. And that's what makes me too fortunate. Uh, Denial Arts include the involvement mission, uh, summer concerts in the park. Uh, they've been off to a great start, they continue on Thursdays in August, but this old engine, which is, that's a pretty good dead man, but. One day we'll get him. Uh, November eighth, and Red Zone Radio on August twenty second, all performances will begin at seven P M Washington Park. In the event of a limited weather, the concert will be postponed until the fall on Thursday, my wife is wild, so I can hear it. Um, Denial resident George W. McDowell publishes his fifth novel. Exodus from a rock, and did this at the young age of ninety three years old.
Yeah, um, so we'd like to congratulate him on writing and publishing his fifth novel. Uh, George is a ninety three year old resident who has called the Miracle Model home for sixty four years, who served as a past commander of the American Legion of Blues one nineteen. Uh, his new book is available for purchase on Amazon and is available to be checked out at the Denial Public Library, where a copy has been donated. Uh, just as his previous four books have been donated to, so, uh, check that out. Um, some road and river projects, Washington Avenue from, uh, North Avenue to First Street. Uh, during the week of July twenty ninth, New Jersey American Water began the final phase of this project, which includes their, uh. Preparation and replacement of sidewalks that were previously damaged during the service installation. Um, Center Street Millennium Pavement Project, the Millennium Pavement, pavement of Center Street began today and is expected to last for approximately four days, weather pending, everybody knows the rain's coming. Millennium Pavement work will span from New Market Road to Hall Street with High Street and Lehigh Street serving as two way detours during the paving process on Wednesday, August seventh. Uh, Pulaski Street Culver Project, P S E and G is finally completing their scope of retiring the old gas main along Pulaski Street and connecting the new one. Which will allow them to remove the temporary bypass that has been in place for nearly a year. The contractor now can, uh, move forward on the project that includes the installation of six new stormwater catch basins and road work. And installation of a new A D A sidewalk ramps at Pulaski Street and Walnut Street, the Pulaski itself. Um, Penfield Place and Main Avenue Road improvements, New Jersey American Water has completed their installation of new water services for each home as well as new fire hydrants. Uh, the next phase of the project includes the reparation of severely damaged curves along these streets. And it's expected to start in the second or third week of August. Um, some updates from our engineers, C and E associates on Klein Place, uh, as it was noted, the sanitary sewage system is complete. P S H G has completed the relocation of gas services that are in conflict with the proposed storm sewage system improvements. Uh, New Jersey American Water completed one water main relocation, but still has another location of, uh, the main and several water services to relocate. They are scheduled to be on site this week. Weather, of course, uh, storm drainage improvements are around sixty percent complete. Um. Lincoln Avenue, C and E has been finalizing their figures for the closeout of the D O T, so we can finally get the grant funds, the deposit, the debt service we took out on it. Uh, Washington Avenue Streetscape, uh, street lighting, the project is ready to be advertised for bids on C and E. Our engineers received the authorization from the Department of Transportation. Uh, second street phase one, field surveys have been performed and the face mapping is being prepared. Uh, preliminary design is completed, C and E will schedule a meeting with the administration to review the plans or cost estimate. And also, uh, talk with the mayor's traffic pedestrian safety task force about the project. Uh, downtown wave finding signage, our engineers are coordinating with signage manufacturer to develop signage details for review with the borough. Uh, seven forty five Albert Road redevelopment project and five twenty eight North Avenue redevelopment project, which is titled Metro two five twenty six. Uh, they're coordinating the remaining engineer, uh, compliance paperwork with them, so they can move towards getting building occupancy. Um, supplementary analysis has been requested by the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection for the railroad avenue project. And they are under review by the J T P. If anybody doesn't know the railroad avenue project, uh, Culver Project is a Culver project underneath the railroad embankment off of South Avenue. Um, that has been in the works for the past twenty years. Uh, we're finally coming to complete, uh, seeing the light on this project, is now funding is fully in place, permitting, the grant, everything. Uh, this is the final stage. Once this is all complete, we can get the project bid in, get it done. We'll be able to have water flow from the south side appropriately where it's supposed to go right now, the culverts that are currently there, there's two. One is completely collapsed, the other one is fifty percent collapsed, so you can only imagine the water that flows is getting stuck. Uh, so this project will allow for three culverts?
I think it's two.
Two, okay.
Right now it's seventy five percent on.
Okay, but they'll be a hundred percent capacity.
Yep.
Um, so, and with the project, the work that the county have been doing on some of the other, uh, Culver project, it's a whole system, so this will hopefully show some alleviation. Um, remediation efforts associated with six thirty five Albert Road or, we know is the strip joint site are ongoing. Uh, demolition bid documents are being prepared, we are assisting, uh, they are assisting the borough with obtaining quotes for asbestos surveys. And the rescue squad looking forward to when this is all done, so they can start moving forward and getting built over there. Um, our engineers has contacted the county to discuss joint pedestrian approval projects at the intersections of New Market Road and Grove Street, New Market Road and Meteor Avenue, and South Washington Avenue and Caron Street. Uh, we're working, scheduled a follow up meeting, again, that is in relation to, um, the approval, the study that they approved for a traffic plate at the intersection of, of Walnut. And, uh, New Market, uh, trying to coordinate efforts for a hundred and seventy thousand dollar grants we received for pedestrian safety on those other intersections I just noticed, so noted. So we're trying to work the logistics out with the county, because they all land on county roads, which, again, more bureaucratic predicate. Uh, local grant applications that. Um, municipal aid, and so we, for approvals to Sanford Avenue, uh, Transit Village, North Avenue Streetscape improvements, we, uh, uh, applied for more decorative lighting. From Jefferson Avenue to Je- uh, Jackson Avenue to Jefferson Avenue. That include the decorative lighting, streetscape improvements, walkway restorations and other related work. Uh, we applied for safe streets of transit for South Washington Avenue sidewalk improvements, basically, uh, we applied for the entire length of South Washington Avenue. Because sidewalks on that section of Washington Avenue are in very much disrepair. Um. And, uh, the engineers have reached out to P S E and G to discuss, uh, the street lighting convers- uh, conversion. Um. For the decorative lighting, because the new lights are all gonna be L E D and right now they're all soft lighting, so if you see the lights that are at the Denial Station project, they're very bright, you know, very nicely in the neighborhood. Uh, we're moving towards L E D for all of them, um, so, we're looking at what the associated costs are to, um, after, before. Within eighteen years, they're not allowed to touch them without a cost to the borough, after eighteen years, am I correct? And they do fifteen or eighteen.
I, I know, um, they, from Madison to Washington, they're all holding up forever.
They'll replace them, so we're trying to see what the cost would be if, for the ones that they don't replace, or can we negotiate if they're only a year away from that.
Yeah, I think, and that's more on Washington.
Yeah, so, uh, those conversations are on going, so that, my report is done. Department heads, anything to report to see, we will start with you, Mr. Rose.
Okay, yes. Uh, okay, just wanted to let you know that we have two, uh, cert student candidates. Uh, they're going to, uh, Saraville for the training. Uh, just like to mention that cert training is for everybody, anybody can take cert training, it's free, it just takes a commitment of time. And the reason why it's important that people receive our residents get this training is because they now become self sufficient for a period of time. They become the help until help arrives. Therefore, let's say in an emergency situation where the police, fire, E M S. Uh, responders have to prioritize their response someplace else. People that have taken a cert program can actually become the help to their friends, their neighbors and their families. So again, that's gonna be a big push, uh, this upcoming year for us to get more people involved in the cert program. Mentioning that, we, uh, we drafted a code of conduct for cert members to protect the borough, uh, it's gonna, uh. Uh, be looked at by our attorney, uh, basically is to make sure that any cert. Members that become part of the team, well, you don't have to become a part of the team, but if you become part of the team, you can operate out, uh, uh. You have to operate within the scope of your training, okay, so that's to protect the borough. The other thing that we have drafted, uh, which was, we, we do by the, uh, our verbal attorney, would be, uh, a shelter agreement. Uh, with the, uh, schools acting for emergency shelters in terms of parameters in which we can set up a shelter. Uh, so that's another, uh. Another agreement, um, the E O Ps, uh, have been approved for the next two years. Uh, thanks to all of the annex authorities, D P W, police, fire, E M S, uh. Uh, all of our annex authorities attending our L E M C meeting, Local Emergency Management Council meetings. So thank you to all of the annex authorities for reviewing our emergency operation plans and getting them approved by the state. We're in the process of planning our four schedule for safety Saturday. We have initiated this program where we're trying to educate our residents with little bits and pieces of how to be prepared. And respond to emergencies. So, uh, our next one is gonna be pet safety. Uh, we're planning that for September the twenty first. Uh, and then thereafter, we're gonna do one for, uh, preparing your children in terms of how to, uh. Make them more resilient in terms of the disaster. Uh, that's efforts led by our social, uh. I should say our community, uh. Coordinator, uh, Autumn Bopeo. And, uh, I think that's, that's it. Thank you.
You and I, I forgot to mention too, you and I have a town hall on August twenty.
Oh, yes.
Twenty first, seven P M, the senior center, mayor's town hall, we do four year, on O M and preparedness, so we'll be right. I need to save time for her, if you can see it, uh, but, you know, it's important that we are aware how to be prepared for it. Uh, so, thank you. Uh, rescue squad?
Hello, everybody. Uh, David Atkins, Vice President, Denial Rescue Squad, it's a lot to share an update with you guys, um, with our relocation project. Again, thank you so much to the borough and fire department and Frank Heidegen for, uh, helping us with our transition out of our property. And we are, uh, located behind the fire station, uh, coordinating excellently with the fire team from their operations, make sure we're both, uh, able to provide our services. Rescue squad, they will provide our twenty four seven, uh, services, our quality has not, uh, decreased, uh, during this transition time. We have to thank the community, uh, the support of them. Um, in other news, we, uh, so, we have contracted the engineer and submitted the plans to the engineer within two, uh, two and a half weeks, we will hear back to them and we will be, uh, moving along with this process. So no major pickups at this point, so again, thank you for that. Um, local news, uh, resident, uh, Georgina Wilkerson recently passed and had donated her electronic, uh, stair chair to the squad. Seven thousand dollar value squad equipment that will be utilized. that will be utilized. Uh, so, I've been asking, uh, a member of this, uh, community for a long time, so we thank, uh, recognition. Uh, another recognition, Mark Nielsen has donated, uh, money towards, uh, our AEDs, our, uh, electronic, uh, calculators. Uh, two new electronic calculators for the squad, one trainer, um, and so, uh, ten thousand dollars worth of equipment. Again, thank you for the, uh, contribution. The, uh, last thing I'll mention will be the, uh, Denon will be hosting a car show event October sixth. We have some flyers in English and Spanish, we want to put these up, uh, for the public to see. Um, similar to last year, how we had our, uh, squad, our, uh, car show, uh, we're here to engage with the community and, uh, raise funds for emergency medical services. Uh, and thank you to the residents for, uh, what we do. We love helping you guys and we want to continue to help and support. Uh, reach out if you have any concerns. Also, uh, denonrescue.org is our website. We're looking for volunteers, applicants, anyone who's looking to get more involved with the community or the, uh, emergency medical services. Thank you.
And make sure you give us the material, we'll hang it up and we'll put it on the, uh, sign, right?
This little sign, yeah.
And if she gets the flyers, uh, look out for Ben. Okay. Police? Um, okay. Administration?
Yeah, I just wanted to thank Chief Scott for, uh, all his help he's been doing along the way with the firehouse. Uh, we, in the Jeremy, uh, it's been a challenge, but there are help along the way, push along the way has been really big and hopefully it'll be done soon. Uh, all the outdoors, that's all, Chief, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Couldn't do it without Alex's help. Thank you.
So, that's a quote. Chief counsel, Chief, Chief, excited, uh, but, thanks.
Anything from my team's perspective? Do you have new computers?
Two new computers.
They're part of the twenty-first century.
Definitely. So, you're looking for a warning, it's really nice.
Thank you.
Awesome.
That was very technical.
Legal?
No report.
Okay.
It's pretty cool now.
Is the clerk?
No.
No, court, okay. Am I missing anybody just so? Okay. Uh, next up on the agenda is item eleven, public comments. So, at this time, we'll open the floor to manage the public. We ask that you step forward, um, and state your name, address, and state your comment, concerns, questions, whatever.
Good evening. I'm Martin Wong, five sixteen Jackson Avenue. Uh, I'm a resident of Denon since nineteen eighty-five. This is my first town council meeting, so don't hold that against me.
Long ago.
I'm calling, uh, I'm coming here to really talk about the noise ordinance, uh, specifically if there is a policy. I was not aware if there is one policy for repeat offenders of the noise ordinance. Uh, if there is one, I don't believe it's being enforced. If there isn't one, I'd be happy to give some suggestions, but, uh, first I'd like to know if there is a policy that addresses repeat offenders. When I say repeat offenders, I mean one, two, uh, two or three or even four. I'm talking about ongoing for months at a time, maybe three, four times a month, you know, and it's, it's something that you don't wanna say, okay, uh, we gotta go out, out to a movie Saturday night just so we don't, don't have to hear the, hear the neighbors. So, that's something that's really, uh, not making, you know, it's really disrespectful to the, to the town, to the neighbors. And I'm not the only one, there's a few people that live near me that, you know, representing in a way too, so.
Well, we hear your concern. Uh, we recently amended, uh, our noise ordinance, uh, September of last year, which was supposed to make enforcement easier based upon, uh, making language more broad. Um, the officers have been directed that, of course, you want, uh, with the new ordinance, you want to issue a warning for citation, um, but it seems as though, I don't wanna make assumptions. Have you called more than once?
Uh, yeah, not, a lot more people have called more than once.
And it's the same offender every time?
Like I said, this is from, uh, really for young half and, uh, you know.
And it's the same?
And it's getting to a point where you don't, you know, you know, people that I know, we don't, we don't call, you know, at the strike of twelve o'clock maybe or something like that. It's at one thirty-two or something like that, call.
And it's the same offender each time?
It's the same offender that I'm talking about, yeah. Uh, and I'm not, I don't wanna talk specifics, at least in the public here, but, um, yeah, it's, it's just that I don't think there's anything being enforced, you know, and, uh, my feeling is if someone went, not at the heat of the moment, but maybe sometime during the week or whatever, go to the homeowner and actually show them the ordinance and say, hey, this is what you're violating, it's disrespectful, you're inconsiderate to the neighbors, and it's just, you know, it's not, not acceptable.
Well, the lieutenant is in person this evening. Um, he is aware that the officers have been directed to issue a warning and then the second, third, fourth call after that to actually put a citation in some of these. Um, so, he will, he just say, you'll tell me that he will speak to you, so we can address that, a specific address, but for the general public at large, continue to call. If they don't get there right then and there, it's because they're probably dealing with another call, but they should be getting there.
I will say that when somebody calls, um, their, a police car, a patrol car is there privately intended.
Oh, sorry.
So, that's never, that's never been an issue on a nightly basis. It's just the, we're talking deep for months and months and months and, you know, unless they're, they're millionaires, they're pending a lot of citations, you know, like that.
No, I mean, I, I don't need to make excuses, but unfortunately, um, it is easy to escape the courtroom and people know that sometimes unfortunate return law, um, they can get away from the courtroom means here because of certain legislation that's been put forward under the current governor's administration. And so, um, not saying that's an excuse, clearly obvious, but unfortunately, it's maybe easier for people to not be held accountable in court, is they can get away with it and there's no guarantee of a warning or any type of thing on them. Uh, people are, uh, the, intergen are very intelligent these days, I'm sure they, they do know that. But, the point being made is we need to see if, and by you talking to the lieutenant and noting the address, we'll find out whether a citation's happening.
Thank you.
No, you're welcome, leaving. Uh, I look next to a disorderly property that you IDF that.
Well, I, I don't even do it, thanks.
Oh, that's even worse.
That's perhaps what's even worse, people that are.
Yeah. Okay. Anybody else in the public? Please state your name and address. Chris Mueller.
Hi, Chris Mueller, two four zero Prospect. Funny time I get up here. Uh, follow-up from our last meeting, uh, spoke again with Alex, just a follow-up that we can get our meeting date set with, meeting with code enforcement and or Alex to address the situation that, that we brought on the floor.
Yeah, I'm gonna follow up, uh, Ken, Ken with that away, so I'll follow up.
Okay. Can you? When is Ken back?
Uh, he's back now.
Oh, well, I'll do, I'll shoot and email to Ken and Chris together. I'm a little bored here. Okay. Good. Thank you.
Hello, I am Faith Thompson, one thirteen Javick Drive, here in Denon. I am one of six volunteers who serve on the dock committee, um, and I would first like to thank the council for passing, um, that ordinance tonight to waive the application fees for the food trucks, um, that we have invited for this event. Um, it's a new process, uh, for us and for the town, and we have previously told these trucks that there was no fee to participate. Um, and I would just like to let everyone know that the food truck night is not a fundraiser for dock or for the rec department. The volunteers, um, on the dock board run it, um, for the community, that those are the things that we do, as Mayor Solento mentioned earlier. Um, so we don't charge the food trucks to attend, we don't charge the participants to attend unlike other food truck festivals and our fundraisers. Um, we, we put it together just to benefit the community and we are thankful that, um, for this year that new twenty-five dollar fee per vendor has been waived, so we appreciate that. Um, I'd also like to thank Lauren Stats who has been very patient with us as we have called and emailed multiple times, and I'm gonna call her again tomorrow for the question, um, to, to, to figure this out, um, with these new regulations that have, uh, come into, into play. Um, I'd also like to thank Kelly Sater for her help in advertising the food truck night and, um, getting the word out there to the community. And I am going to give a thank you in advance to Alex Miller, um, because we're about to get him up for the DPW spa courses for road closure. Um, extra pot, court bodies and extra garbage cans and garbage bags, um, for Washington Park, which he was very helpful last year in supplying. Um, and then, I'm not sure if it's through Alex that we need to go or through Kelly or who, but, um, we'd also like, um, the no parking signs, like the signs that the police put up, um, on Park Place and, um, Denon Ave, um, starting at maybe like two or three o'clock for that afternoon, if they can put the signs up maybe the day before or that morning. Um, we did have a little bit of a scare last year, we had three or four cars that were parked in those diagonals on Park Place where we were gonna pull the food trucks in and as well as on Denon Ave, but fortunately, one by one, they all moved out of the way. I think the last one moved maybe around five fifteen or five thirty and we would be able to maneuver those trucks in. So, um, but just in general, thank you for supporting the dock and, um, we're praying for good weather, um, for the food truck and, for the food truck night and also combined with the recreation and Denon Library meeting night, so looking forward to a great event for the town, but just wanted to thank you all.
Well, thank you for the work that your team does. Alex, I believe you're here now, how to speak to the police squad about the, uh...
Okay. Okay. So, it's good, thank you.
Thank you, Faith. Do you have anything?
Hi, uh, David Atkinsen, uh, two forty-seven Penfield. Um, there, there was a mention of the dangerous intersection. I just wanted, it was the, what was it, Wauchung and, uh, Prospect? Um, wherever, and I just wanted to, uh, I heard you guys were, you reported tonight that you were looking into doing a stoplight on one of these intersections. I wanted to, you know, definitely say that that intersection right there, I think it's Wauchung and, uh, Prospect is...
Uh, we're looking at Wal- so, we went to the county to look at the intersection, uh, Walnut, New Market, Prospect, Walnut and Grove, Whittier and New Market for that intersection. And so, uh, the county came back and said, yes, that the intersection of New Market and Walnut would require traffic signal. They suggested that other traffic measure, we measure, we look at the intersection of Prospect and Walnut as well as the intersection, the, the, or, the exit of the road, I guess you'd say, New Market, Whittier and, uh, Grove Street. Um, at that intersection specifically, Grove Street, New Market, um, as well as South Washington Avenue, Grove Street, uh, Denon received a hundred and seventy thousand dollars, uh, from local aid grants from the state of the rapid need, the press button, the, the rapid place that you see on Lincoln, uh, Wonka, President Flash, so, um, those are the measures we're looking at those.
Okay. Yeah, it was the New Market one, I just wanted to make sure, because that is a very dangerous intersection.
Ah, I, I.
Because I know personally, I, but, uh, so, thank you.
Yep, thank you for your, uh, your input. And it might be good to have you guys on part of the traffic pedestrian safety task force too, if you please.
Sure, I'll talk to you.
Any other members of the public that are in chambers or online, please state your name and address. Brian, anyone online?
No.
Okay, if no further public, uh, comments, we are going to, I have the resolution in front of me.
Three.
Thank you. Um, at this time, uh, item number, uh, twelve, uh, is a resolution to enter into executive session. So, for the record, I will read it out. Uh, can I have a motion in a second on the, uh, Open Public Meetings Act permits the closing of meetings to the public under certain circumstances and whereas there exists such a circumstance and whereas authorized from borough council to go into executive session to discuss litigation, which after action may be taken, and whereas minutes of the executive session will be kept and will be released when the matters under discussion during executive session are no longer confidential, therefore be resolved that the borough council will enter into an executive session. Uh, can I have a motion in a second, please?
No, right, we have, second, Brad, you want?
So, with that, I'm gonna kindly respectfully ask that the public, uh, please, uh, escort out of the council chambers. Uh, we anticipate this might be around thirty to forty-five minutes, in which case we will open the doors and if you so choose, you may re-enter to be a valid session following. And council, uh, let's have, uh, about a ten minute recess.
Yeah, guys.
...
Second segment.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Move it.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Stigman?
Yes.
Mr. Van De Hoorn?
Yes.
Next resolution is number two fifty-two. Resolution to hire Dawn Dahl as part-time court clerk in Allen District Court. It was offered by the W. B. Fox Borough in Allen, Jersey that Dawn Dahl is hired for part-time employment as court clerk. They pay twenty-five dollars per hour for up to twenty-nine hours a week. So it will be sixty thousand four hundred and forty-four. This condition is without benefits and a back marriage.
Have a motion second please.
What else?
Second segment.
Yes. Misses Lans? Yes.
Misses Reos?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Stigman?
Yes.
Yes.
Next, last resolution number two fifty-three. Resolution to hire per game coverage in Allen District Court. It was offered by the W. B. Fox Borough in Allen, Jersey that the Allen Borough Council would permit per game cover as necessary for the District Court at twenty-five dollars per hour. Cover is expected to be necessary once complete for court sessions. This per game coverage is without benefits. The following is a list of those employees of other courts that assist in Allen District Court as per game cover. Daniella Bogaera, Elizabeth Dabba, Richard Ruters, Elena Pytis, Jamie Peterson, Captain Miller, Kelly Flack.
Have a motion second please. Move it, segment.
Second. Yes.
Perfect discussion. Doctor, any vote called?
Misses Davison? Yes. Misses Lans? Yes. Misses Reos? Yes. Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Stigman?
Yes.
Mr. Van De Hoorn?
Yes.
Okay. Item number fourteen of the U.S. Circuit on is resolution number two fifty. Resolution of adjournment. Have a motion second please. Move it, segment.
Second.
Okay. Have a motion second. Vote call please.
Misses Davison? Yes. Misses Lans? Yes. Misses Reos? Yes. Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Stigman?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.